All to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, February the nineteenth. If you would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Mike Hall with Grace Bible Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Father, thank you for this council and the willingness to serve our community. I know they are tasked with many important decisions that will affect the Greenwood community for many years to come. I ask that you give them wisdom beyond their natural understanding to make these decisions. I ask that you first and foremost, give them humility, that they might understand that you give divine grace to the humble, but you resist the proud, as you stated in your word. I ask that you grant them to see that they are servants of the citizens of Greenwood. I ask also that you grant all those present here this evening, both council members and citizens of our community, to speak words of graciousness. There are many different interests at work in our community. Even when those interests seem at odds, you see clearly the best solutions. I pray that you will work through the men and women of this council to clearly see the highest good in balancing these interests. So we ask these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and for His glory, which is always for our good.
Thank you. May be seated. Roll call.
Here.
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 Lexi.
Here.
Manchuk.
Mo.
Here.
And Williams.
Here.
And we have a quorum. All of you should receive copies of our minutes for regular meeting of February the third. Do we have a motion?
I have two firsts.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mo. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? You're an end in roll call in a minute.
Vetrone, say. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manchuk.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of eight to zero with one abstention. I'm always pleased when our police and fire departments choose the council forum to swear in new officers and present awards. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our mayor, Mark Myers, and chief officer of the police department.
Council, thank you for allowing us to have a few minutes to honor and award Officer Anthony Swafford the Life Saving Medal. Here in a minute, Assistant Chief Bill Ours will read a brief synopsis of what he did to earn this medal. But we're extremely proud of him. I think he's got his family here. This, you can.
Your young officer.
Your young officer can come up if she would like. And with that. All right. On June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Officer Anthony Swafford responded to twelve forty-one Scarborough Lane on a report of a six-day-old infant that was not breathing. Upon Officer Swafford's arrival, he found the infant blue with a foamy substance coming from its mouth. Officer Swafford immediately took the infant from the parents and began CPR procedures. Officer Swafford was able to clear the infant's airway and the child began to cry. The infant was then transported to a local hospital where it made a full recovery. For his quick thinking, he had performed actions that night. He has earned an agreement with police department, Life Saving Medal.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your service. All right, reports, Corporation Council.
Okay.
Any other controller at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Any other committee or board reports? I think I sent you all copies of the minutes from the last IBC meeting. If you have any questions, let me know. Any other committee or board reports? All right, as most of you know, the mayor's office and the council split some financial contributions to various organizations. And we ask, as part of that, that those organizations come before the council and at least present a written report each year of their financial situation. And tonight, we have an in-person report from the Greenwood Band. I believe Ms. Ashley Pennett is here.
Ladies and council, friends. Hi, so I think you guys have my report. I'm going to try to go over it pretty quickly because I don't want to worry you. But we've got some exciting stuff going on in the Greater Greenwood Community Band. So for starters, I'm Ashley Pennett. I currently serve as the vice president of the band. It's just busy. I kind of serve as like the membership chair, if you will. So we currently have ninety members. So guys, this is a big deal. But for those that don't know, we are all volunteer community band and on the south side, it's near Greenwood. We currently rehearse at Forest Pleasant Middle School. We're about to outgrow our group. It's a good problem to have. We have a lot of musicians. They're so excited. We just personally obviously want to be very grateful to the city of Greenwood for the five thousand dollars that we receive. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit about what we use it for. So for starters, we do almost a concert a month. We usually take a break into December into like a little bit of a winter. So almost once a month, we have a concert and we typically perform at Greenwood High School. But we have concerts around during construction, different things like that, with schedule. We also do our summer concerts at the Strayna Park Amphitheater, where we try to make those more of a performance and an experience, not just come sit for a concert. But we do have quite the audience there. We try to really emphasize that. We want to get people involved, get people enjoying the music in that way. In addition to our local concerts, we were selected by the Indiana Music Educators Association as their featured concert band at their conference last year, where it was patchy, right? So that was received very well. We were very excited to represent Greenwood, the year, and ourselves as well. Some other things that we do in the community that we like to highlight at this time, we're saying thankful, be thankful, excuse me. We have small ensembles that play at local assisted living centers, as well as events for the Old Town Greenwood. We pretty much, anytime anybody calls, we try to answer as much as we can. And we love to get back to our community as soon as they give it to us. And part of that is also with the Parks Department, the Santa Train, and even the light and Christmas display. We try to send small groups for that if we can show up. But even with the generous grant, we do run out of small deficit. So this year, we're implementing a fundraising now. I hate to take this time, but I am on the channel, so plug it. You're all welcome to attend if you want. It's on March eighth. And like I said, we do operate at that small deficit. Even though our members do pay dues, they pay about fifty dollars. We really try not to raise that because we want to make our group as accessible as possible to as many people as possible. So, yeah, anyway, we're trying to raise funds for the group just so that we can establish or continue to establish our kind of hold on this area because we have so many players that we want to continue to be around for years to come. Right now, we're sitting, I think we've been around since nineteen thirty-three. Correct me if I'm wrong, we'll get that later. But, yeah, so almost, you know, thirty, thirty-two, three, a couple of years like that. So we're trying to maintain that and grow with that. But we did have some unexpected expenses. Our store trisly kind of got shifted. And so now we have that expense every month, which is quite a lot. So we're just trying to, like I said, maintain that and keep our endeavors going for the future. So, yeah, that's pretty much what we've been up to. We have a lot of concerts. We have a side-by-side concert every fall as well. So six different schools send their kids with us and they play a few songs alongside us. So that's always fun and they love it because they're ranging from middle school to high school, too. And they kind of get to see that you can still play your instrument even if you don't do it professionally. And it's a fun time and we try to just get back to our community. Thanks so much for hearing our call.
Any questions for answering?
Michael, turn on fire for the gala. She'd like more than a shake.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You all should have received a copy of the band contracts. Have a motion to approve the contract for five thousand dollars total, twenty-five hundred from the council, twenty-five from the mayor's office. Motion by Mr. Williams, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vetrone. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass as unanimous. Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And there is a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone? All right, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. None under notice but ten to consider. First reading, ordinance number twenty-five oh six.
Ordinance number twenty-five oh six, ordinance to amend Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter seven, Article one, Building Code, establish a building commissioner, building code official, Inspector, Inspector Conover, the Vetrone, and to make various changes sponsored by Gibson.
You have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Or anyone want to talk to us about this?
Ken was not able, Ken, our building commissioner, was not able to make it tonight. I'll look at any specific questions. I could try my best to answer them. I know that the building team have been working with legal on these changes for some time now.
All right. Any questions? You're an end in roll call. Ordinance twenty-five oh six, first reading.
Vetrone, aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manchuk.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five oh six passes first reading nine zero. Second reading, resolution twenty-five oh one.
Resolution number twenty-five oh one, a resolution of the Greenwood Common Council to adopt the RIT fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately one hundred and sixty-seven acres located at three four eight one seven hundred and fifty road on sixty-four hundred block west side north, one twenty-five west, preventing annexation ordinance number twenty-five dash one sponsored by Gibson.
You have a motion?
Yes.
Gibson, second. We'll discuss this. Do you have a second, by Ms. Manchuk?
Correct.
All right, as I'm sure all of you are wondering, we, since resolution twenty-five oh one references ordinance twenty-five oh one, which failed, there's no need to pass resolution twenty-five oh one. However, since it passed first reading, it needs to be on the agenda, and I believe. Mr. Nelson.
Sorry, I was jumping around on the agenda there on my phone. I would like to withdraw this petition since the annexation is not forward. I see no need for our common council to adopt the fiscal plan.
All right, do you have a motion to withdraw resolution twenty-five oh one? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it is withdrawn.
Thank you, council.
Consideration. Thank you. Resolution twenty-five oh two.
Resolution number twenty-five oh two, a resolution to prove that it's a local agreement between the city of Greenwood and Pleasant Township, Johnson County, regarding fire protection sponsored by Campbell.
You have a motion? Motion by Mr. Mo, second. Second by Mr. Hopper. I believe this is something we do every year. Any questions? All right, roll call, resolution twenty-five oh two, second reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manchuk.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Vetrone. Aye.
Resolution twenty-five oh two passes second reading nine zero. Resolution twenty-five oh three.
Resolution number twenty-five oh three, a resolution of the Greenwood Common Council authorizing the filing of an application for acceptance of implementation of two thousand twenty-five county local drug-free community fund grant of nine thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars with the drug-free Johnson County sponsored by Gibson.
You have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? You're an end in roll call, resolution twenty-five oh three, second reading.
Gibson. Aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manchuk.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vetrone.
Aye. Yep.
All right, resolution twenty-five oh three passes second reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-five oh three.
Ordinance number twenty-five oh three, and ordinance providing the two thousand twenty-five salary ordinance, common council ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-seven, at part-time, voluntary degree of health coordinator position at the fire department sponsored by Mo.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Mo, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? You're an end in roll call, resolution twenty-five oh three, second reading.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manchuk.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vetrone. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Resolution to, or ordinance twenty-five oh three passes second reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-five oh four.
Ordinance number twenty-five oh four, and ordinance providing for incorporation from the local aid settlement restricted fund budget classification personal services four oh one one of thirty-five thousand dollars sponsored by Mo.
You have a motion? Motion by Mr. Mo, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion, questions? You're an end, then roll call, ordinance twenty-five oh four, second reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manchuk.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vetrone. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
Ordinance twenty-five oh four passes second reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-five oh five.
Ordinance number twenty-five oh five, and ordinance providing the two thousand twenty-five salary ordinance, common council ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-seven, to decrease a maintenance labor position and add a maintenance labor slash non-DOT position in the stormwater department sponsored by Campbell.
You have a motion? Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? You're an end in roll call, ordinance twenty-five oh five, second reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manchuk.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vetrone. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five oh five passes second reading nine zero. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number twenty-five oh seven.
Ordinance number twenty-five oh seven, ordinance providing Chapter two, Article six, Section two dash thirty-eight of the Greenwood Municipal Code, as amended, designated no parking on both sides of Stacy's Way between Graham Road and Collins Road, and on Collins Road between Allen Road and Graham Road sponsored by Hopper.
Chief, will you talk to us about this?
Sure, the backrigs and warehouses on our commercial district. I mean, their semis lock the roadway, they line the roadway at different times of the day because they have certain times that they can pick up and deliver. And if they don't meet that time or arrive a little bit early, they sit out there and it causes traffic congestion. It is a major safety issue for vehicles using those thoroughfares. And we have been dealing with it for months, moving them. So we're just wanting a little more teeth and a little help with signage that prohibits them from parking on the roadway out there. They're already congested.
All right, any questions for the chief?
Chief, would you like for us to suspend the rules so we can help you get this under control?
That would be helpful.
And move for suspension.
We have a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty-five oh four through first reading. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Vetrone, motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Ms. Vetrone. Any discussion?
Yes, I would have one question for you, to be the son of the truck driver. Where do they go if they get here early? Where do we direct them? See, the, so the, the problem is, the interstate have. We're moving them off the on-ramp because they're parking up there. There's not enough semi parking at our local trucks. We're lucky in this area because we have one at White Lynn, we have one here in Greenwood, but they have to pay to park there. A lot of them don't want to do that. There's also new restrictions, federal restrictions on truck drivers, that they actually have timers in their vehicle that go off and they have to pull over and stop. So it's upon them really to make preparations for their route and find a place and pay in advance for them to stop. But the, the problem out, out east is, you know, Amazon has so much traffic that they, they won't, it's not just Amazon, but a lot of them won't let them in unless they're right at their delivery or pick that time. And then they obviously don't want to have to leave and come back, so they just find a place to park. But when you have twenty or thirty semi, a lot of roads out there becomes a problem.
All right, any other discussion on suspending? You're an end in roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading on ordinance twenty-five oh four.
Manchuk. Aye. Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vetrone. Aye.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Rules are suspended through first reading on a vote of nine to zero. Do you have a motion on first reading?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion?
I have a quick comment, I guess, question for you as well, because not necessarily related to this exact ordinance, but stopping team with Aldi, I know we've had the same issue there. Is that something you're looking at?
We have, yes. We've been dealing with it all over the city. That is becoming a newer problem for us. I actually just ran the truck driver off. The, the problem, I, I understand where the truck drivers, they're frustrated. And I understand they have a job to do, but my job is to look after the public safety and the traffic flow. And the, this, this new break, all the new regulations that are being put on the truck drivers, they're, they're really just finding any place they can to pull up. It's not just a problem for our community, it's a problem everywhere. There's not enough rest stops, there's not enough truck stops, and I get it, but they, they can't just park on the side of the road. But yes, we, we have been dealing with it out there also.
All right, any other discussion? Questions? You're an end in roll call, first reading, ordinance twenty-five oh four.
Aye.
Excuse me.
William.
Aye.
Vetrone. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Manchuk.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five oh four passes first reading nine zero.
Move for suspension of the rules for second reading.
Motion by Ms. Gibson to suspend the rules through second reading. Do you have a second? Second on Ms. Manchuk. Any discussion on suspension? You're an end in roll call, suspension of the rules through second reading, ordinance twenty-five oh four.
Williams.
Aye.
Vetrone. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi. Manchuk.
Aye.
All right. Rules are suspended on a vote of nine to zero. Do you have a motion on first reading?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, I'm sorry, motion on second reading, Ms. Gibson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion? You're an end, then roll call, ordinance twenty-five oh four.
Oh, seven.
Twenty-five oh seven, second reading. But I may have been saying twenty-five oh four the whole time.
I knew it.
So just for the record, that should be ordinance twenty-five oh seven. And so we have a motion and a second, roll call and second reading, ordinance twenty-five oh seven.
Vetrone. Aye. Williams, excuse me, Campbell.
Aye.
Where'd I came from? Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manchuk.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five oh seven passes second reading on a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance twenty-five oh eight.
Ordinance number twenty-five oh eight, ordinance to amend Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter four, Section four dash six six, the additional fee schedule to increase fees to amend Chapter six, Section six dash three three nine, obstruction of streets and sidewalks to establish fees to amend Chapter six, Section six dash one one five, false alarms to prescribe fines and to amend Chapter seven, Session seven dash forty-five, right-of-way excavations, cuts, and disturbances to increase permit fees sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Nelson.
Hi there. So I'm here for, I can try to answer all the questions generally, but we do have quite a few things going on here with the fee schedules. One is false alarms for fire. Right now, every time a false alarm is triggered, fire has to respond to those, trying to adjust our fees to accurately compensate for what they're doing there. We also have engineering fees that are looking to be increased. This is if someone is working in our right-of-way, making a cut, adding a driveway or an obstruction into our right-of-way that was not supposed to be there or was not approved. Some of that is just looking at the permit review of these things, and some of this is actually looking at the, the fees behind people that may, may have caused an offense. We also do have our building fees, and some of those include inspection fees that our building division has looked at. A lot of these are both looking at the cost it is for staff to go out to make these inspections, to do the reviews, but also looking at neighborhood communities, communities of similar size in the Midwest and in Indiana. We do have our permit fees, and that is what I had previously sent over the plant commission recommendation from. That would be for planning and building. That was a unanimous recommendation from our advisory plant commission. And the reason for some of these fee increases, which have not been increased for planning and building since twenty thirteen, is in order to compensate without some supplementing with taxpayer money. So right now, we have staff time, we have review, we have meetings, we help with applications, we have legal reviews. We spend time with applicants. If we're not accurately compensating for the expense of staff salary, staff review, staff expertise, that ends up being paid for by the taxpayers and not the people that are actually looking for the subdivision or the variance. I also would like to note, we did add a few fees, one of those being a zoning verification letter. This would not be for residents calling in to ask about the zoning of a, a property. These are typically from zoning institutions with many due diligence and public record requests. We have many of these, and it's a pretty standard thing for municipalities to have fees for that, as well as a few other fees that have been added from stormwater and. that's probably all I have right now, unless you guys have any questions.
All right, any questions, Mr. Nelson? Thank you. All right, miscellaneous business. This is an opportunity we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right, seen none. I have a couple of things under council miscellaneous business. The first one is not on the agenda, but the, our appointment to the Fire Mayor Commission, that appointment expires on February the 23rd of this month, a couple of days. The person currently, our current appointee is Steve Daunt, former fire chief, and to my knowledge, he's doing a great job, and he would like to continue in that position. So I entertain a motion of Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Mr. Moon, to reappoint Steve Daunt to the fire commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Thank you very much. Secondly, is our annual contract with the social. They presented a annual report that you all should have gotten copies of, and a few other things as well. I think the social does a great job. Linda, or Ms. Gibson, is our appointee to the social board. Just like with the band, we split the money they receive between the mayor's office and our, and the council. The total amount is $50,000. It's 25 from the mayor's office and 25,000 from us. Any questions about the contract or the social? Do you have a motion to approve the contract?
Second.
Motion of Mr. Lexi, a second. Second of Ms. Manship. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passes unanimously. Oh, we'll let Ms. Gibson upstate. So passes eight to zero with one abstention. The other thing that I have is just a question. I know at our last meeting, we appointed a meet and confer committee. Just out of curiosity, have you all met yet?
Not since.
Okay. I just curious. All right, anything else from the council?
Nothing. I'm sorry.
Okay.
The other council.
Anything else from the city council? All right, any other Corporation Council?
No, sir.
Controller?
Controller, me.
And the mayor is gone, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.